We will have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It is 10 o'clock, July 24th. And for those who do not know, I'm the county commissioner, Tom Bloom. To my left is Sean Secora, county commissioner. And Ed Hawkins is the other county commissioner. Just to make sure people know who the county commissioners are. With that, we will now go to consensus and approval.
We can.
Okay.
We have 50 exonerations for 13,914.56. Vouchers for general county fund, 365, 633.70. Cole Severance, 11,005.10.65. 911, 78,000.916.25. Chestnut Ridge Park, 2,0216.08. Mason Dixon Park, 1,005.25.83. Transportation levy, 11,009.96.81. Fire levy, 89,008.63 cents. Recreation levy, 81,004.40.91. Library levy, 63,001.85.12. And reallocated coal, $10,735.65. Purchasing card vouchers, general county fund, 23,951.04. Magistrate Court, 46.20.911.13.74. Chestnut Ridge Park, 452.54. For a voucher total of 740,733.15. We have budget revisions on the agenda, but we're going to take those up separately.
Okay.
Position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, Mon County Planning Commission, Mon County Development Authority, the Mon County Building Commission, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, and the Deckers Creek Public Service District. We also have fiduciary orders for July 24th, 2019, and a separate fiduciary matter that you'll have to take up separately.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, we have a separate fiduciary order, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have a motion for a hearing in the estate of... Oh, gosh, the name just slipped my mind. Parenti.
Ellen Parenti?
Edith, Virginia, Ruth Parenti.
Oh, okay, yes.
You've received an objection, not an objection, sorry, a petition for the removal of the administrator. The petitioner is Fred Parenti. There's estate notes from the clerk's office in your file.
Yes.
I'm not sure what you all want to do.
He called and talked to Carrie about the timelines to be followed and processed in the state.
Carrie, do you mind if I ask for a little background on this?
No. The executrix called and asked if she could have more time for the... to file the appraisement. That was in April. And then Mr. Parenti called, and I explained to him the process. He wasn't quite sure. He was wanting to know his... the avenues that he had to try to move this estate along. So I explained to him the process. As of today, we've still not received the appraisement from the executrix. So Mr. Parenti filed the petition for removal. Because she did call our office and ask for an extension, which we customarily grant. And that was in April, but we've not heard from her.
What was the length of the extension?
We don't actually set a length. She... All estates are different for various different reasons. And so she did make contact with us and had communication that she was working on it and that she was just going to need a little bit more time. But that was in April, and this is almost August. This is July, so...
So are we actually approving a hearing to...
To set a hearing?
Yeah, so we would be setting a hearing to hear this motion and make a decision.
Yes.
If that is your... if that is your purview, or you would set a... You could either hold the hearing or appoint a fiduciary commissioner to hear the parties and make a recommendation back to you on whether you should approve the petition for removal or not.
I would recommend that we go ahead and forward it to fiduciary commissioner to make a recommendation back to us.
Yes. The move in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Carrie, for that information.
Okay, so now you have two budget revisions.
Go ahead and do Cole Severance first, because that's fairly straightforward.
Yeah, we had to revise the one that was approved last week because we had put balance in contingencies, but we're only allowed to do 10% of the total amount of the budget. So that's why we're having to revise that. The amount for contingencies is now 19,850. And the balance... The difference of what was previously approved will be put into the county commission contributions line at 118.720... Or 742.
Okay. I move to approve that we... Move to approve the Cole Severance budget to send on to the state.
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now the important one.
Yeah, the next one is our... is our main general fund budget. And now that we know our final carryover, we had to dispose of the remaining dollars and do a budget revision and send it on to the state. So what we... Well, let me go ahead and move that we approve this, and then we can have discussion.
Second.
Okay. Poppy moves in second now. We'll be discussing.
Okay, we had projected a carryover of 8 million. The carryover actually came in at 9,317.356. Where we are... the actual budget revision and discussion, we are moving 569,732 of that to salaries to cover the remaining part of the increases that we did, plus any additional insurance, depending on how the insurance shook out. So that's where 569 goes, and that represents about 43% of that 1.3. Next, we have planning commission staff contingency. And that number is 131.103. And that represents about 9% of the... of the additional carryover. And this number represents, you know, planned additions to the planning commission staff, assuming that we move forward on... with the possibility that we would move forward on subdivision regs and land use ordinance. This also has that half position with the MMPO. So that would be the total. If we would move forward on all of those. Contracting out an engineer and the additional staff. And then some other corrections, and we had to make some adjustments to the current planner's salary based on... The previous budget was based off the previous planner's salary. So that's 131,000 of that. 30,000 was moved to additional extension office rent due to delay in getting our building up and running. We have another 30,000 in rent. But I think we're pleased to say that our deadline, or our new date for moving into the building is 10/1/19, so...
And I worked with HR on a number, and we figured another six months. So that will give them through December.
Okay. So we've got plenty of cushion there. We put another 250,000 in regional jail fees, because that number had been creeping up. We had them. We, when I say we, I don't want to take credit for the group that the prosecutor, the judges, and we all were taking part of, sheriff, in driving those numbers down. But we started having a spike towards the middle of last year, and that trend continued through the end of the year. So our regional jail fees have gone up. So I certainly hope that, Perry, with your help, that... Perry, that we can get that group back together and kind of focus on what's causing this and try to keep driving those costs down. There were some additional commission costs, audit costs and dues, that we put 20,000 in the commission budget. We had a janitorial services typo in the original budget, so we had to put another 57,000 in there. And then we made a contribution to Mountain Fest of $5,000. So overall, employee salary account for 53 percent... 53.2% of this additional amount. Contracted services, 27.15. Financial stability contingencies, 19.28. The number I didn't mention yet was financial stabilization. We put 250... the remainder, 253.921 in financial stabilization, because our contingency budget is already fully funded. So we can't go over 10%. So that's a good thing. That's an additional contingency that we have out there. So again, the total amount was 1,317.356. And that's how we dispersed it in this budget that we have on the table to approve.
Just for clarification, and I know Ben will understand, but there seems to be some confusion. We have 1.317 million additional carryover. We projected 8 million, which means they've already been encumbered. They're already... the money's already earmarked. There seems to be confusion when others see it and come up with that 9 million. That is not correct. It's 1 point... and I don't know how to...
Let me see if I can clarify that a little bit.
Yes, because that's what happens when certain people say, "Well, we had a huge carry..." No, we didn't. We have 1.3 million carryover.
When you look at last year's budget,
Okay.
we didn't spend 7,447,684 in expenses that were planned.
Right, planned.
A lot of those were assumed. I mean, that also includes contingency. So those are dollars that may or may not, for the most part, weren't expected to be expended this year. Personal services accounts for 15% of that carryover. Contracted services, 22%. Commodities for... now, that would be one that you planned on spending, but you didn't. Capital outlay. There's a 19.74 that we didn't spend in capital outlay. That's where we're putting money into our infrastructure, but it didn't happen in this year. So that's not anything additional. That's just something that's rolling over to the next year. And then contingencies is 7% of that whole number. That's of the $7 million number.
Right.
But if you take that $7 million number and you factor in that we had $1.7 million in additional revenue over what was projected for last year, and that's what gets you to that total 9.3 number.
Exactly.
But, you know, the first thing they teach us in any budgeting process is you try to keep expenses high and revenues low to be realistic. With those revenues, we can't project it. We were going to have 1.7. And Renetta and I are going to do some additional work with the assessor's office to see, like, some of those... half a million of that was in additional taxes that... So we're going to do some research into why that was. But these... control of these numbers has been shrinking and shrinking and shrinking over the past couple of years. And we... certainly, everything that we're seeing here is what we fairly well expected. Our carryover would have came in where it would have came in had it not been for the additional 1.7 in revenue.
Exactly. And that's why I want to get it real clear. And of the two major expenses, really, it's the employee salary benefits that we're giving new, that, you know, we didn't project at the time. And also, the additional regional jail fees. And I also wanted to thank Perry Squared, as I would call it. Perry, Perry. The Judge Sheriff's Department, the Prosecutor's Office, the magistrate. And we have been meeting, and we're planning to set up another meeting. And this just shows you how much this additional cost has happened. And we have to look at it. And it's not just our problem. We're one of the few that actually are paying the regional bills. Other counties can't even afford that. So that is going to... so right there is over 750,000 of that 1.3 million. So I just want it very clear, because I know it's done correctly in the newspaper. It's done correctly in the radio. However, it's interpreted by certain individuals, and we wanted to make it very clear.
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll get you that information, so you have it. Okay, with that being said, and all positive news, let's talk about new employees and the personnel changes. Let's try Perry to Christopher. Perry won. Good morning.
Good morning. I apologize for not being here last week to represent to you that we have rehired Jennifer Stevens. She was with our office for about six years doing abuse and neglect cases. She is back, and we are thankful for that. And she's going to be on a part-time basis. She is actually in court today, or she would be here with me today. Renetta, do you have my letter of July 12th? Yes. Okay. And so her salary is listed within there with addition of benefits. Like I said, she's going to help work on our abuse and neglect backlog. And I wouldn't say backlog, our swell of abuse and neglect cases. I would like to have her full-time. Maybe we're going to work on that a little bit. But for now, we are super happy to have her back with part-time.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perry, while you're here, could I ask?
Sure.
When we approved this year's budget, we had four additional positions in there for you. Can you give us an update on where those stand?
Actually, you had changing to part-time to full-time. And that was our investigator, who has been hired full-time. Our part-time assistant, administrative assistant, who was mainly dealing with abuse and neglect cases, and that's Ally Long. And she has come full-time. Jennifer's spot was for a full-time position, although we hired her as a part-time position. We have not yet added the one additional unfilled administrative assistant spot.
Yeah, I meant there was some more actions.
We have one to go.
Thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to...
You have one transfer from...
Oh, we have one transfer. Go ahead.
Kenneth Clark is moving from part-time court security to full-time court security.
Okay, so we'll just have that in the record. Okay, thank you. Moving on, comments from the public. Is there anyone who'd like to come down, talk with us? We'd love to hear from you. Just state your name and your address. Anyone would like to speak? This isn't Lake City Council. We're friendly. Okay. No comments. We'll move on. Second reading of public hearing on application to amend the West Run Planning District zoning designation from low-density R1 to high-density R4 for subject property legally described as Morgan District Tax Map 4D Parcel 7 and 8. And do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
We're having a public hearing.
You're having a public hearing.
Yes.
So you need to have your planner come up and give you a...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Then, yes. I apologize. Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning.
So we have to have you inform it, and then if anybody would like to speak afterwards, we have the pros and then the cons. Okay. So if you want to just give a Cliff Notes version?
A Cliff Notes version?
Yes.
In 2017, the beginning of 2017, you approved a conversion of an area that's already high-density, basically, what we're calling high-density R4, to happen. These are two parcels at the corner of Chestnut Ridge and Northwestern Avenue that were sort of a hole in this doughnut of other high-density. It's surrounded by... it's an appropriate area. This was then heard by the planning commission. They did not see any particular problems with this particular application. We've had no public comment, other than the letter that you received, which was in favor. So this seems like a pretty straightforward application. And planning staff recommended the planning commission also moved it forward for approval.
The public hearing guidelines are in the folder now.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay. At this time, is there anybody here to speak in favor of this zoning change? Good morning.
Good morning.
If you state your name and address.
Tim Lewis, 3435 Plazelle Union Road. I'm a contractor here in Morgantown for about 35 years. Built several custom homes and several nice apartment buildings. What we're proposing is a 36 unit. What we'd like to do is cater more to the resident doctors, pre-med doctors, due to the location. And our units are roughly 1,000 square feet per unit. And they're only one-bedroom units. So they're going to be real nice units, real nice curb appeal. And as he said, you know, we are surrounded by R4, totally surrounded. Across the street, we're mostly commercial, well, all commercial. So, you know, we're just asking that, you know, if you could approve to zone it to R4. And, you know, what we're proposing to put up there is going to be a really nice structure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who is in support of the request?
I am supportive, but, you know, I also work for the company...
Okay, could you state your name and address?
Oh, my name's Homer Wilson. I live at 66 U Street, Bayousville, West Virginia. I want to ask for approval of this. I mean, you know, because the area that's there, very old houses, nice piece of land, good area, that would really improve the area greatly by getting rid of these old dilapidated structures and put something in, like Tim said, curb appeal. You know, we always put nice things out front. We try to make it look decorative to the area. So I just ask that you make... also make this approval.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to support? Okay, seeing none? Is there anyone who wished to speak who is opposed to the request? Opposed to the request? Seeing none? There's really no need then for the petitioner to respond, since there's nothing to respond to, so we'll close the public hearing. And how do you want to proceed?
I am now able to vote that we... make a motion that we approve this, please.
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And thank you for going through the process. And thank you, Andrew, for explaining it, making it very clear. So that has been approved, and we'll move on. Okay. Grants. Colleen Coon.
I do. I have the Community Participation Grant Program contract. This is between the West Virginia Development Office for... Clay District Fair, sorry. They were approved for $10,000. They just need to sign.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. Approve the fair. Grant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Great. Number eight, we were to have Dr. Smith, but they've asked... They're still working on this situation. They've asked to hold off for one week. Is that correct? Okay. And I'm glad they are. And we'll explain later what's going on. Correspondence. We have a letter from George Lilly thanking the commission for appointing him to the Mon County Health Board of Health, just to say that it is... we received it, and we want to thank him for thanking us. Okay, July 19th, July 2019, monthly financial performance report from Mountain Line Transit Authority. We've received that. Have we received any other correspondence?
No, sir.
Okay. Unfinished business. Consideration to appoint Matthew Escutta, Ryan J. Uminah?
Uminah.
Yeah, that close to... Umina, sorry. And Beth LeBeau? Okay. As fiduciary commissioners for Mon County, as recommended by Carrie Blaney, county clerk.
Move for approval with the discussion?
Second.
Go ahead.
We had interviewed all of these three individuals, and thank you, Carrie, for bringing them forward. I think that this will... we currently only have one fiduciary commissioner, so this will give us four capable commissioners, so that we can keep up with our workload. I do commend the effort or the support that we get from our one fiduciary commissioner, George Armstead. And I hope that he will be involved in helping to... bring these up to speed. These are all very young attorneys, but very capable. And I would wish that George would have a lot of input in helping groom them in... so that they can... they can come up to speed with the county processes and all the estates that we currently have. So I appreciate all... Carrie, for providing these. And I think they're good... three good candidates. And we can pick and choose and use them as kind of like an IDIQ, indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, whenever we need to utilize them, while still utilizing our main fiduciary commissioner, George Armstead, too, to that end. And we also have other things that we're working on and having discussions regarding fiduciary commissioners. And I want to continue those conversations.
Okay. It's been Poppy moves in second. Do you have any discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Okay. Any other unfinished business?
No, sir.
Okay, we're at new business. To consider for approval, requisition number 22 for the University Town Center EODD Special District Excise Tax Revenue Refunding and Improvement Bond Series 2017 Administrative Expense Fund.
The requisition is for $2,182.50, and that will be paid to me to cap.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other new business?
No, sir.
Okay, moving on. Number 12, reports from elected officials. Perry, come on down. The honorary sheriff?
Good morning.
And chief tax clerk?
Yes. We are here...
Don't hit on her.
We are here to present the fiscal year 2019 share settlement. This is the final settlement of all counts as required by the state auditor's office. Our tax office collected and distributed over $106 million in taxes for 2018.
Say that again. I apologize.
They collected and distributed taxes totaling over $106 million for 2018. And I'd just like to recognize Kelly and her tax office for doing an outstanding job, getting this all done. If you all have any questions?
There's a lot to digest, if you want to look at it.
Okay.
If you have any questions.
Thank you.
Out of curiosity, what was seen? I'm assuming it was an increase last year. I mean, it is...
Yes, and, you know, I don't have that number with me, but I can...
But there was an increase.
There wasn't a definite increase, yes.
No, and again, the number Perry is throwing out is not just our general fund. It's all of our...
Correct.
It's all of our enterprise accounts. It's all the levies. It's everything.
Okay.
Actually, the $106 million is just taxes.
Oh.
The overall revenue was 131 million.
Okay.
But that's taxed, however, like he said, and distributed.
Right.
So we didn't keep... the county did not get $106 million. That was on behalf of the Board of Education, all the municipalities, the TIFs, and the excess levies as well.
Just for clarification, we don't charge the city, for example, anything for those services, do we? When you collect it and distribute it?
No.
No, that's our responsibility.
Just to make it sure. Thank you.
Correct. And I will say one more thing on another subject. My office wanted me to make sure that I thanked you all again for our office. Of course, and I meant to bring a statement with me. Everybody got their bills, I'm sure, the gold and black...
Yes.
Tax bills in the mail. And so lines have been out the door for the last three or four days, including last week. But a lot of the taxpayers are coming in for the first time, and they're very impressed. And it makes it a much easier work environment when you're not on top of each other and you have space. So thank you to you. Thank you to Bobby and his guys, because we are enjoying every minute of it.
We appreciate that, too.
Thank you.
Makes it more positive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other reports? Sure, go right. Be my guest.
I just wanted to bring to your attention, we did send out the administrative close letters on behalf of the county commission. Two weeks ago, I believe, we sent out almost 1,000 letters to the 230 estates that we had identified that met the criteria under the new law. We have received several phone calls from people who are not aware why they're getting this letter, et cetera. I just wanted to bring that to your attention in case you all are receiving calls. We certainly are trying to help people as much as we can. The gist of the letter, however, is that nothing has been done on this estate. So if an executor or executrix administrator is receiving that letter, they just need to complete the steps in the estate prior to you all holding your hearing date. And as long as they do that, there's nothing... no adverse effect to that. If they do nothing and no one contacts us, then you all would just administratively close that estate.
Okay.
So I know that there's a lot of legalese in the letter, and some people are, you know, saying it's a threatening letter. And we certainly just pulled the language straight from the code. But that's sort of the Cliff Notes version of what that all means, but...
Thank you very much.
Thank you for informing us that, yeah. Thank you for performance, yeah. Is there any other elected officials that would like to speak? Seeing none. Welcome back, Sean. I know, hope things are going well. What, you now, let's have your report, please.
Actually, my report's going to be kind of light, because I was out of pocket for the past week. I did manage to call in on Friday to the extension building meeting, the meeting that we all had with Myland Park, and I think that, that's all going well. We just needed the momentum to get us over the hump, and we knew that things were going to take off. So that's going very well. And I also called into the meeting on Tuesday. I am trying to, to get back up to speed, but I'll spare everybody, and that's all I'll report for now.
Okay.
As Sean reported, the Friday, I think it was a very productive meeting that we had in the morning, and the afternoon, we also met on the site. I provided as well a tour to Tom McConnell and Amy Blake, both WBU officials, to show them what we were working on. Tom is in charge of small farms. That evening, I traveled to Daybrook for the Clay District Fair, and had some great homemade pie. Saturday was Kids' Day in Morgantown, and we had a great day at our 4H booth. A lot of fun, a lot of, very warm. Saturday evening, I drove out to the Triune Halleck Farmers' Fair, and there, it was really good to catch up with, sometimes I see old patients and old friends there, so that was really nice, too. Yesterday, we had another morning meeting at Myland Park on Extension and 4H Center. And then in the evening, I drove out to Wadestown, and participated in the Patel District Fair, and that was, as always, I've been going there for quite a few years. And then coming up on Friday, we'll be meeting, I'll be meeting with HR Scott and Sue De Perouts in her office regarding extension, as she is the interim head of extension. So looking forward to that meeting and see what comes out of that.
Okay. Mon will be sure to, I didn't attend the meeting Friday, because I had the pedestrian meeting, and it's going extremely well. We're really pushing the Mountaineer Safe program, and we're hoping to have, by the end of August, three of the pedestrian places done, completed, and in working condition. And we're very excited about that. Second, on Saturday, we did have, as you said, we had the Clinton, at the Clinton Fire Hall, we want, I want to personally thank them, they allowed us to go inside. We had our Mountaineer Food Bank pantry, plus more food giveaway that was in the nineties and plus, and we had a hundred and thirty families and four hundred family members. And to just give you an idea, there were half a dozen people there at six-thirty in the morning waiting. So the need is there. And finally, I want, again, and I will keep promoting it until it happens, Friday, August ninth, is the Back to School Bash at North Elementary. This thing is now not only going to be statewide, one of the biggest, it could be, this thing is just growing, but we'll be given haircuts. We now have seven hundred backpacks, we're planning, that's completely filled with materials, and all school supplies for the entire year. And we just got a commitment last week from the Mountaineer Food Bank. They are bringing, instead of a truck, a tractor trailer enough to feed seven hundred families. So this is going to be just an enormous event. And again, it's only for, for Montague County children and their families. And we're very excited about this, and we'll keep, we'll give you a little more information as it gets closer. Anyone else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We be adjourned. We be gone. Thank you.